Debbie Brady is absent with notice. John Chartier, absent with notice. Marion Queer, present. Bob Eisinger. Lucy Calvino, present, absent with notice. Kevin McWellen.
I'm here.
Diane Salter.
Here.
Dr. Outlaw.
Here.
Jan Meek.
Here.
Dr. Schmutz.
Here.
Zoe Harris and Samantha Loden.
I'm here.
Okay, are you Cecilia and Julie?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Everybody stand for the flagellations, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we've got Brandon Hostel's student report.
We are from the Brandon Student Council. I'm Cecilia Suwes.
I'm Julie Allen. So, the homecoming events parade was successful with some new participants this year. Example, like the federal or government Grofland Fire Department and first student. Homecoming Dance was the highest attended in years and we sold out of tickets. Currently freshman lead spirit with points and we're showing the upperclassmen off, so we did good.
The community service projects in September Student Council was involved with Community Closet and September Fest. This past week, the students of the council helped set up, run, and clean up the witches' night out event in downtown Ortonville. We currently are investigating a partnership with the Community Closet to provide hygiene products for the less fortunate in our area.
Test prep day, the high school participated, participated in test prep for their grades level on September 27th. The response so far has been positive. Student Council plans to gain feedback from students about this day and future days through our new student outreach committee.
At the athletic events, the varsity team will fight in for the league title this Friday on our home field against Sports Creek at 7:00 PM. The varsity boys' district soccer team is tonight in Marysville. Other varsity ball sports are headed to into playoff seasons over the next two weeks.
Upcoming council events include the haunted hallways. Student Council and Link Crew have teamed up to host this event on October 29th from 6:00 to 8:00. And student council officers will travel to Genesee County base camps for Flint Metro League meeting this Wednesday.
And that is all.
I have a question. On Friday, I saw the signs going up for hotspots. Tell me what, did you, I thought that was Student Council going around the Enethan Village.
What? The witches' night? Yeah, that was a witches' night out, like.
So those were the hotspots to go to for that event?
Yeah.
Okay. It was, that was a great event. I was downtown on Saturday. That was like really a positive, lots of people down there.
That turned out just great.
You guys take it. Great, the choir was great, everybody, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, superintendent's report.
All right, for this month's report, I am going to turn it over to Diane Sedan, our special ed preschool director. Diane's going to talk about an honor that Brandon's gotten the last several years, this five-star preschoolers, one of 77 five-star preschoolers in the entire state of Michigan and only one of a couple handfuls here in Oakwood County. It's really a big deal. So I want Diane to talk a little bit about what that's all about and what it took to get there. So, thanks Diane.
Thank you. Hey, I thought this was working with this. Oh, there you go. All right, so this is my seventh year and I inherited a preschool program that was going along well. We had a GSRP program and a tuition-based program. And we had just closed the childcare program when I had started, so that was not a part of it. And we had some special ed classrooms for preschool children. This year is the second time we've been given the five-star rating. We were also given it two years ago. It renews every two years, you have to apply every two years so that you continue to stay at the level that they're expecting. So this is what the certificate looks like. It's a five-star rating. Other ratings, they do have, give other ratings out also, but this is the highest rating that the state of Michigan gives. And the point of the Great Start to Quality program is that they wanted to be able to share with parents and evaluate the preschool and childcare programs that are in the state. So parents would have an idea of which programs had higher quality, what kinds of things they had. They evaluate both in-home childcare and preschool community-based programs. So it's a whole gamut of childcare for zero to five-year-olds, preschool and infant and toddler. It rates the quality of the participation of the early program and the designs to increase the quality. So people try to get higher stars so that, you know, parents say, oh, that's a great program, I want to be a part of that. And they also then post it so that parents go on their website and actually say, okay, I'm in Ortonville, or I'm in Troy, or wherever I am, and where are the preschool programs, or where are the childcare programs, and what kind of ratings do they have. You actually can put in your radius and how far away you want to drive and things like that. The ratings scales are, goes from zero to five. And as you'll see, the, there's about 440, 4,466 programs that they, that are in the state, but only about 1,800 participate. So some people don't even want to participate because they probably wouldn't get very good scores, so why bother participating? So they're, you know, if you have a, so these are just the breakdown. Fifty get a one-star right now, this is through the whole state. 195 get a two-star. The majority of people get three-stars, so they're doing okay. And to be a GSRP program, you'd have to have three-stars or you would not be able to be a part of the Great Start Readiness Program, which is the four-year-old funded program by the state. And then there's some five, four-star rating. And then there's only 77 programs in the whole state that is five-stars rating and we're part of that 3%, which is pretty cool. There's only, I think, maybe six or seven in the whole county, so. This is just a little graph sort of to give you the idea of how they're doing. They rank it different parts of the year, the first quarter, the second quarter, the third quarter, because people are, it's a rotating evaluation program. And again, three, three-stars is the highest and then very few are in the five-star rating area. So what they actually, the rating is, they're talking about the quality of the program, so there's this tiered programming going. They assess us, we have to, there's, it's a lot of paperwork. So I have to collect all the professional development that my teachers and the associate teachers and the parent professionals go through in the preschool. You have to make sure they have at least 25 hours per year, that's a minimum. They then look at the credentials that all the teachers have, all the parent professionals and all the associate teachers. So like associate teachers have to have a CDA or an associate's degree. All the teachers that we hire have teacher certificates and some have master's degrees. They all have to have early childhood majors. They also, of course, have to have, you know, all the required licensing things, like, so you have to make sure that everyone in the room has CPR, first aid, and AED training. And now they've added non-maleficious intervention and exclusion and restraint training. So they keep adding the trainings in. They also added this year our, a separate fingerprinting. So Michigan fingerprinting for the state of Michigan requires that you go through a fingerprinting and that checks us out to make sure that you're appropriate and safe to be in, out of the state of Michigan. Well, the licensing system now requires all the preschool people, whoever works with preschool children, to go through an additional fingerprinting program, which is through the whole country. And so they check out all the states to make sure that you are not anywhere on anybody's list that should not be working in preschool or schools even. Then they also check for our support system. Where do we have resources? What kinds of supports are we getting? Who's mentoring us? And we have an outside evaluator that comes in and evaluates our program. It's called the Program Quality Assessment. And this person comes in, they come in and do three full-day PQAs, it's called. They also do a play visit once a month and then they meet with us and discuss our data regarding our assessments that we do for children. And this is just to let you know that out of 50 points that you could have gotten on our assessment, we had 45 out of 50. And as you see, you know, one star is the minimal requirements, just to be a part of the, even the program. Two stars demonstrate some quality across some of the standards. Three stars is several standards. Four is quality across most standards. And five-star is demonstrates the highest quality. One of the things about the high star, about the five-star rating is that you have to receive a PQA of over 4.5 out of five in each of your classrooms, and that's what we have. And that's, it's really special and my teachers, and it's all about them, because the way that you get that assessment is through, primarily through what's in their room, the design of their room, that they're following the curriculum, which is High Scope, and that they're working within the realm of our curriculum, and that the children are making the gains, and that is shown through their curriculum and assessment, which is our core rating. The outside evaluator actually goes in and looks at the core notes that our teachers type in, and that's how they're making them. So it's very intense. If you look at the scores and I'm like, you know, I'm like that Type A, like, I think I should have 50 out of 50, but there are certain things I can't change. So like environmentally, I have six out of eight, well, that's because of the size of our rooms and I can't change that and I don't, you know, well, whatever. As long as I'm still in that top tier, we're okay. The PQA is what I was talking about, where the outside evaluator comes in. It's part of the GSRP program and we're also hiring her to come in. Last year, we had an internal person did it, but this year we'll have an outside person do it for all of our other classrooms. They look at the learning environment, what kind of materials you have in your room, do you have the right kinds of books that talk about multicultural? Do you have information about how the families are in that classroom? If you have, we have, every teacher has a family book that they put together and they ask teachers and our parents to send in pictures of what they do for a job. So we're making sure that we identify the different jobs and careers that parents have within our classroom so we can discuss that. Parents will bring in uniforms and old uniforms, so we can have that as our, in part of our dress-up areas. So they talk about the daily routine, that they're following that routine, just like in the K-12 system. We have pacing guides. They have requirements that, you know, you go outside twice a day, at least 30 minutes, that's a requirement. If you, I have teachers sort of get marked down because she came in at like 27 minutes. Well, you weren't quite outside 30 minutes, okay, that didn't happen again. So it's the fidelity of meeting the curriculum and the requirements that they have. And probably one of the biggest things is child, child, adult interactions. The teachers and the adults in the room have to be interacting with the children. That's the learning that's going on. That's the language that they're increasing. That's the engagement that they're working on with the children so that they are exploring and learning as they go through their day. And it looks like play, but it's called work time. So she comes and plays visits, she does an all-day observation three times a year, she goes through our core notes, which is the child observation records, and then we have data meetings that she then shares with us, the kind of data that we're having with all of our students and how they're growing. And then, of course, just wanted to show you, we have, had a great new, if you haven't been in our preschool, you have to come in because it's great, they have a great painting going on, they painted the hallways, and we have this new order there, that's a couple children and one of our teachers with our certificate, and that should be on the Great Start website, I think. And just some fun pictures, dress up, and our first day of preschool, and our playground that we're using, and children having fun with that, learning through fine motor skills and cutting and rolling out things. These are accounting bears, and may I true up, you know, starts in preschool, we're doing all kinds of things that leads up to them being ready for kindergarten. This is a program, I have children in three of my, four of my classrooms, my junior second classrooms, they ask for people to donate so that each child could get a book once a month. And so this is the first month that all the children in this classroom got a, got a book that they ordered for them. So bringing those books and reading that literature and bringing that home for all the families. Play, you know, the sandbox is the best place. You don't like sand, you're in trouble. And continue to build and reading here and then just having fun. Just wanted to share with you some of the numbers. When I started in 2012, we had one GSRP classroom, a Head Start room, which we don't operate, but we house, and they do service Brandon children. One tuition-based classroom, which was just a half-day program, and then one and a half special ed classrooms that were both, that were half-day programs. So we serviced about, you know, 106 kids. But most of them were half-day students, which you're only getting half the amount of education then, okay? And that's when, first went over to, you know, kindergarten became a full-day program. So you had children who weren't as prepared because they had only gone to school half-days, most of them. Now, we have four GSRP classrooms, we have one Head Start classroom, that is, these are all full-day classes. We have two full-day tuition classrooms and we have one tuition half-day classroom. And we service an additional like 70 students, but for the most part, they're full, full-day students. So we're getting a lot more time to work with students and I love when I hear a kindergarten teacher say, well, you know if they went to preschool or not because of what they do when they walk in, the first, second, third day of school, they're prepared and they're ready to go. So, any questions?
You did excellent job for doing that. A lot of good information, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I need to say thank you for this whole program bringing the standards so high. And like, I was thinking, you set the standards at the low end and when they go into the kindergartens and the first grades that they are prepared and going, but this is, this is excellent to hear this news and to have this on our school. So thank you for hard work and all the staff.
Thank you.
Next, public comments and questions on agenda. Okay, next, can I get an approval, please, on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those against, say no, please. Motion passes. Before we continue, we're going to add another action item. It's going to be C, approval of a charge to order to the wastewater treatment plant. We need to add a little more money to finish up what's going on over there, so there'll be a action item to say up to $15,000. And that will be action item C, like Charles. Next, information and discussion items, financial report.
Yeah, just have a couple things tonight. The main event is our auditors are here, Paul Bryant and Chris Kasab, to present the results of the audit, and it's all been new, so it's good. But before that, I wanted to just let you know about a new program here, Community Ed, which I'm thinking of for continuing it, and it was a real collaboration between Bob Larson and the principal and myself. And what we're starting here is, I think it's kind of an innovative program. We used our testing data to identify students that are 55% proficient or less in math and reading. And then they were given letters, personalized letters from the, from the principal, but the teachers handed them out. In Oakwood anyway, we're, we're doing Harvey tomorrow. And the, what we're doing is two days a week and hour and 15 minutes, we'll put a late snack, and then they're going to have a personalized tutoring session using technology. And there'll be testing, so we'll be able to look at results. We feel like it's, I call it the Sylvan-type method, but it's about $5 a session, so it's very reasonable, you know, what Sylvan does. In Oakwood, we have three teachers, so we have a 1 to 10 ratio. We have to cap at 30 because the computer lab is at 30. After, less than a week, we have already almost 30 kids signed up, so they're probably going to have to turn away some kids, but Harvey Swanson, I'm anticipating the same turnout, they'll start a week later. But the vision would be, we're still getting everything worked out, the final details with the teachers, the three teachers in Oakwood and Bob and Coy, but this, we would see this perhaps going into April, you know, winter months, and really making it to try to maximize the results or impact on my sequencing programs. Bob identified RAS Kids and the Khan Academy, so those are two well-known software programs that have been proven to help see improvements in reading and math. So we feel really good about this. It was months in the making, but we all kind of came together and the teachers at the end of the day, like I said, we have three in Oakwood, which is great, so we have a 1 to 10 ratio. Even though it's technology, they still need the help from the teachers with the kids. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know that that's something that we're doing to extend the school day and hopefully help some kids.
This is a K-5?
Yeah, this is about 1 to 5, first grade, 5th grade, yeah. And once we get this up and running, you know, who knows, maybe look at 6th grade or 7th grade even, you know.
Well, and then you got the test prep going on at the high school, so that, that sounds like this is, yeah, we got to get the in-between now.
Right, right. I think, we talked about middle school next, but you know, it's great now that we have all the kids registered in Oakwood or most of them, you know, Bob's going in there and looking and he'll provide, you know, the data for the teachers and, so it really will be personalized, so we're hoping that it helps some. I just wanted to let you know that and that's all I have.
Well, good evening to everyone.
Good evening, welcome back.
Thank you.
For here early.
And yes, as Jen mentioned, all good news. So that's great when you're talking about an audit for any reason. My, my name is Paul Bryant, for those in the audience, and this is Chris Kasab, and what we're going to do is walk through the financial information for you for the year ending June 32, 2018. In front of you, there are a couple of documents. It's the final bound copy of the audit report for you, as well as a copy of the powerpoint presentation that is on the board as well. So just starting off real quickly, just to let you know, overall, we were able to issue an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion that we as auditors can give to an entity that we're currently performing the audit on. And again, as Chris walks through, feel free to have questions if you have any, and we'll talk about the year that you had for the year that you shared.
Thanks, Paul. So for our presentation here, we're going to be focusing on the general fund, which is the district's primary operating fund. So this slide here presents the general fund budget versus actual, and this essentially represents the income statement, which includes revenue and expenditures, which then brings you down to your fund balance. So if you take a look at that top line, revenue for the year in the general fund was $25.5 million, which was just about $100,000 less than you guys had budgeted for. Other financing sources of $274,000. This essentially represents the cost of the capital leases for the buses that you guys acquired. The way we account for this is other financing source, which is essentially a revenue item. Expenditures came in well under budget, about $275,000 under budget at $25.5 million. So if you take your revenue plus the other financing sources, less your expenditures, you get down to your change in fund balance, which was an increase to this year's fund balance of $200,000. What that left the district with was a $4.1 million fund balance. And so on the next slides, we're going to break down kind of what's in the revenue and expenditure number a little further.
Before we leave here, just looking at this slide and then, a couple of things to point out. So if you look in the first column, you'll see that third line from the bottom, you originally budgeted to add to your fund balance approximately $34,000. But again, because of really every expenditure line item on your budget, you were under budget. So that allowed you to actually add $223,000, as Chris just mentioned, to your budget. So again, looking at your budget line by line, I mean, great budgeting, even when we look at some budgets, some people are just way off on their budgeting. But again, not budgeting too high or too low, but right on the spot, and again, you can see exactly where you're coming in for the year.
So we're going to talk a little more specifically about what makes up the general fund revenue. So that top line there, this would present the 2018 revenue compared to the 2017 revenue. So the top line there is federal revenue, which was about $968,000, a little bit less than last year. Primarily included in your federal revenue would be Title I money and IDEA money. IDEA is the special ed grant that you, that's received by the district, and this would be about $600,000 of that $968,000. So that's a good chunk of that federal revenue. Local revenue would primarily be property tax revenues, and you'll see this was down just slightly again from last year by $45,000, totaling this year was $3.1 million. The largest portion of your, of your revenue would be your state revenue, and this is primarily from the state aid foundation allowance, which is driven primarily by the per-people amount. So one thing to note in the state revenue this year is there's a one-time MIPSers adjustment, which is money that's received from the state. That totaled $1.9 million this year, and last year was $1.6 million. So that is essentially money that you're getting that has to go directly to the retirement system. It's money that you can't make any decisions with, you don't have any control over. But we want to point that out because although state went down in total by $50,000, that was made up by the increase in the retirement payment, which was a $300,000 increase. So if you think about that variance, your true state aid foundation allowance went down about, about $500,000 from last year. And again, that's directly tied to the per-people amount, which we'll talk about a little bit more. Lastly, at $1.3 million would be inter-district source revenue, and this is primarily the PAAT money that's received from Oakland schools. This next slide breaks out expenditures by function, again, comparing 2018, 2017. So you'll notice in that top line, the biggest function is, as you would expect, instructional expenses, and that totaled $14 million this year. And this would be primarily salaries, wages, and benefits for teachers. And this went up about $400,000 from last year, primarily due to the amended teacher contract that was in place for the full year. This would also include the cost of substitute teachers, classroom materials, and supplies. Next, you have support services. This would primarily be wages and benefits for support staff, such as counselors, principals, aides, and would also include purchase services for paraprof services and things of that nature that help support the classroom.
Why wouldn't that go into instructional?
Just how it gets classified. Instructional is purely, well, not purely, but mostly teacher expenses.
Direct in the classroom.
So, okay, so the cost of the paraprof's then fall on our support services?
Right, yes. The next line down is athletics and community services at $750,000. Again, pretty consistent with last year. And then finally, at Million One was debts, this is, this includes a couple different items. Debt service, which is principal and interest expense on the district's outstanding debt. Capital outlay, which includes capital improvements, fixed asset purchases, and then payments to other public schools, which would include tuition payments to some of the other local districts in the area. So in total, total expenditures was $25.5 million, which was up about $462,000 from last year. Again, a big portion of that was the increase in teacher wages.
So one thing, before we leave off of this, I wanted to point out, so although there was an increase, and we'll see it a little later. So overall, your expenses went up slightly in the current year. Revenue dropped, but as we go further along, you'll see, you're pretty steady in what you're making sure actually stays in the classroom, even though your expenses are going up and your revenue's going down. This, and again, you can tell from your budgeting, but then also overall, your, your programs are not suffering even though your revenue's going down. You've done a good job of making sure you're reallocating those monies where they need to be.
Can I add something to? On the revenue side, where we talked about the increase in the MIPSers of $301,000, that's also reflected on the expenditure side.
Correct, so it's a net.
So part of that increase in expenditure, I just, so that, that answers the, you're all?
Because it comes in and goes right back.
Yes.
Right, and also the, the other financing source, $199,000 for the.
Buses.
Buses. That also is a, reflected as part of our capital expense, and that's an in and out. So both sides went up.
And this slide here, as Paul mentioned, presents the percentage of instructional expenditures compared to total expenditures. And so this is a seven-year trend, and essentially what you'll notice is that year over year, the district is consistently putting its dollars towards the classroom and instructional expenses. This year was 55%, which again is, hasn't really deviated much from the previous six years. Which again, is great that you guys are able to keep funding the classroom and putting those dollars to good work.
Okay. Any idea how that compares with most of the studies you look at? Is that similar, higher, lower?
Just trying to think of some of the ones off the top of my head. You'd be slightly lower, but they have a much larger student population.
Okay.
You'd be slightly lower, but they have a much larger student population, and then their revenue has not dropped as much as yours.
So this slide is kind of what it all boils down to, and this is your general fund balance. And again, you'll notice a positive trend here over the last seven years. The far right column is your 2018 fund balance, and you'll notice two shadings here. So the total fund balance is four-point-one million dollars, but it's broken out into two buckets. The orange is the unassigned fund balance, which essentially is unrestricted and can be used for whatever you guys decide. The teal color is the assigned fund balance, and this would be two million dollars that's been assigned for future capital improvements. And so we kind of like to put the fund balance in perspective a little bit, so if you just take the unassigned fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures, that's about eight percent, and that's the equivalent of about, that would basically give you thirty days of cash flow to use on a three-hundred-and-sixty-five day calendar, and give you fifteen days of cash flow on a hundred-and-eighty day school calendar. And then again, just to put it in perspective, the total fund balance as a percentage of expenditures this year was about eleven-point-eight percent. I looked it up before I came here, and the average, I'm sorry, your fund balance as a percentage of total is sixteen-point-one percent, the statewide average is eleven-point-eight percent. So you guys are well above the statewide average as far as total fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, which, given the decrease in revenue and the amended teacher contract, being able to add to the fund balance has been great.
And before we leave this slide, so as Chris was mentioning, one thing I looked at compared to prior year, you might not remember, but in your assigned, there was, last year was one-point-two million, this year you moved it up to two million, so I would just say, well, what would have happened if they hadn't bumped it up and moved it? Your percentages in your days would have almost doubled going forward. So it's just, again, this is a little misleading because you've chosen to move those dollars from unassigned to assigned, but they're still there available, and for whatever the reason, you've made the decision to move them back, you still have, it'll still affect your numbers in a positive way.
Cause we know we have about six million dollars from the projects we need to do.
Exactly.
Without our singing fund, that didn't pass, so we actively worked at increasing that because many of these projects, you know, have to be done.
Correct.
You can't not do it. So we've consciously worked very, very hard, and I think the whole entire district has really done a great job, and Jan sort of led the effort financially to do what we tend to add to that, so that essentially we could take care of the district in the best manner possible.
In fact, we have two action items that are gonna be some energy bond, and we have the, what's the other one? Oh, IDA is coming up next, and so, you know, we've been really, like I said, trying to get Jan to done a great job in searching out other means of getting some of these projects done without having to go back into the pockets of our citizens.
Correct. So having, taking, painting the picture of all of those things you have to do, you've been holding the line on your expenses, as well as looking at alternative revenue-type sources, to be able to still bring up a great product, I mean, I just listened to the preschool for your five-star program, it's things like that that you're able to provide to the community by showing that you're able to hold the line on your expenses and still put out a good product.
So this next slide here presents the student enrollment trend over the last seven years, so probably is no surprise to you guys, I'm sure you guys talk about this quite often, there's been a decrease in the student count over the last several years. So looking at this year's pupil count, it was two-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-six, which was a hundred-and-twenty student decrease from the prior year, twenty-six-hundred. And so essentially, if you if you do the math on all this, over the last seven years, there's been a decrease in students of seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine, and if you take the current year foundation allowance, which is seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars per student received from the state, that essentially represents a revenue loss of six-point-one million dollars. So that kind of helps put it in perspective as to how much the the student count is really impacting the statewide revenue.
And even with the drop from seventeen to eighteen, I usually tell people, as you're fully aware, it's not one classroom, it's two kindergartners, it's five in the high school, it's several in the middle school, but yet you still have to fund overall the classroom, the teacher, the lights, things, that's a huge drop to still, the one slide we looked at, maintaining your expenses in the classroom at a pretty steady rate.
Our last slide here shows the trend in the foundation allowance, which is what I talked about, the per pupil allowance. So the far right, seven-six-thousand-thirty-one per pupil, which was an increase of a hundred-and-twenty from last year, so although your student count decreased, you did receive more per pupil from the state this year. And for fiscal nineteen, the amount would have increased again to seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars, which represents an increase of two-hundred-and-forty per pupil. So the increase from last year is now doubled on a per pupil basis, which will obviously help offset any continued declines in enrollment.
And sometimes I wish the expenses had dropped, by the time so expenses drop by double, what you're gonna give you in your increase.
Oh, yeah.
To hold the line and make and make sure things are still being done appropriately education-wise. But it is tough, as you can see, from 2012 through 18, it has gone up, but nowhere close to where it needs to be compared to what inflation requires that you have to put out for things costing, but is creeping up, at least in a positive direction. There's been no hold that we've had or an adjustment down like there has been in years in the past.
Yeah, this is my eighth year on the school board, and we fight the same battles every year. It's picking up nickels and dimes, you know, on the way to try to add the dollars again.
That is exactly it.
So that's all we have for you. If you guys have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
No, I don't know, thank Jan and her team, did a great job as usual.
Yes.
Thank you guys, happy to see you guys, appreciate what you guys do, kind of making sure we're running clean.
Yes, um, thank you to Jan and her group, very good at doing the audit, I don't have all, that are always as easy to get into, and Jan's very good at talking to us throughout the year, if issues are coming up, like you were talking about your energy bond, we've talked about that and what that means, and if you look in your audit report, there's a subsequent event that will describe the energy bond that is out there. So we try to make sure we're up on things so that there's no surprises for you at the end, so as you deal with them, we're dealing with them with you as we go.
And we appreciate a lot of meetings, you think, oh, great, we don't want this report coming, but we actually start to look forward to it because of the good work and the hard work that we get throughout the year, and really appreciative of staying top on this and keeping things as balanced as we can, playing that game, so.
Yes, cause you have a lot of decisions to make, you wanna make sure you make, you use an.
And they've been tough in the past year.
They have.
They have been very tough, but this is, this sort of puts some credence that we're at least stabilizing, we're looking good, and we need this, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have questions? Thank you again, thanks, Jan.
The final plug I wanted to make is we have our school law and finance seminar coming up in January, you guys are all invited. I think I brought some handouts for you as a save the date, if I have them in my bag, I'll hand them out, but I think it's in January. If I don't have them in my bag, I'll send you.
We can lay it here for a couple of us.
Yep. Oh, you got them? Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we got the education report.
All right.
Shimero.
Shimero, you're big old one now.
I know, trust me, I'm gonna mess up Dinesh too, or Dinesh.
Dinesh.
Dinesh, I'll mess that one up too.
So that's okay, I know who I am, that's all that matters. I always appreciate the opportunity to get up here and speak with you guys, and I'm gonna try to follow up some of the amazing things that we just heard regarding the budget. A term that I've heard both Dr. Outlaw and Jan say often is we have to make sure we get an academic return on our investment, and that's kind of my responsibility. When I hear the money being put aside into our classrooms and the instruction, I know that my responsibility is then to make sure that we're hitting the marks with the money that's being set aside. So today I wanna talk about some of the work that we've done so far this first month of the school year, aside from looking at evaluations and assessment and curriculum, this year the really big focus is on literacy and doing all of the work necessary to make sure that our students in all of our classrooms, K-12, have the skills necessary to be literate in today's society. We've done a deep dive, looking at some of our data, which I'll show you a sampling of in just a minute, exploring our student success, our student growth, and the work of literacy. One thing I wanna to highlight is what we have in blue on here. When we talk about literacy, we're no longer just talking about reading. Literacy is much bigger than just talking about reading. Literacy is something that we measure with our students, but it goes beyond reading. We'll talk through some of those components as we go. Just to take you back in time to 2010, 2010 is when the state of Michigan adopted these standards, so we're now in the ninth year of college and career readiness standards, being the game that we play in education here in the state of Michigan. College and career readiness standards, just to give you that overview one more time because it sets the foundation for all of our work. The state of Michigan adopted standards, basically said, we need to look at what our high school graduates are gonna look like at the end of 12th grade. What are the essential skills that our students need to be college and career ready? And then they worked backwards from there. They said, if this is what we need at the end of 12th grade, what's it need to look like at 11th grade, then 10th grade, then 9th grade, and back all the way up to kindergarten, so that we have a long, continuous spectrum of scaffold of instruction, so that every single year we're building on and building on and building on until eventually we end up with students that can do these things. The state adopted these ten readiness standards for literacy, and they set the groundwork for the work that we're doing this year, as we're trying to make sure that our students possess these skills by the time they leave grade. So what is, what have we done so far? Well, we've done quite a bit. We've taken a look at, like I said, a lot of data, and this is just a sampling. When we're looking at literacy, we get assessment scores from anywhere and everywhere, to be honest with you. Every assessment that we administer to our kids gives us literacy scores in some regard. The primary measure that we use is M-Step, as you know, from third through eighth grade. With the M-Step, one of the great things about M-Step is we can break it down by the various strands in literacy. Just a quick look at this chart, blue is good, orange means we have some work to do, red means we need to really pay some special attention. This represents the percentages of our kids that are proficient in those subgroups on the M-Step in regards to literacy.
They text, test listening?
They do.
Wow.
Another thing that we've taken a look at is how does Brandon compare to both the state and the county? With, this again breaks down, we can see reading, writing, research, or that informational text, and listening. On this chart, you can see some various colors, the orange represents the state averages, the percentages of kids that are proficient according to the state, the green represents the county, and blue represents Brandon in fifth grade. So just from those two charts, you can see we've got a little bit of work that we need to do in all of these subgroups of literacy, it goes beyond just reading. We've also taken an analysis of the standards or the curriculum that's actually provided to our teachers. We use, we utilize a system called Atlas, which tells our teachers what needs to be taught, when it needs to be taught, and to the depth it needs to be taught. This is a chart that shows something known as Bloom's taxonomy, or the actual level of depth or the rigor in which the instruction needs to be taught. What we've noticed when we look at Atlas, this red line represents where most of our instruction stops according to our curriculum, our existing curriculum. Says that when students are reading, they need to go back and be able to summarize the information, they need to be able to come up with the main ideas, and show that they can comprehend some text, or when they're writing, they should be able to just summarize something that they just read. Reality, what the standards say are way up higher. It's not necessarily the content that we need to change, it's the depth in which we're teaching, the level of rigor in which we're exposing our kids to. No longer are we asking kids to just analyze or to regurgitate information, now we're asking students to be able to wrestle with information, to debate the author, and to analyze text for accuracy, and to wrestle with their own thoughts and make meaning and make up new ideas. What we've seen is that our curriculum doesn't necessarily match with that need. And how do we know this? Well, this is hot off the presses. This is a chart that was just given to me today, and I think it kind of tells the picture very, very well. One of the assessments we use is we give our students the NWA test three times a year, and that helps us get some of that predictive information so that we don't have those surprises in the spring. One of the things that NWA does is they have a correlation study, so we can see how our kids are doing and what they're on pace to do in the spring with the quote-unquote big test, whether it's the M-Step or the SAT. On the left-hand side, NWA said, here's how your students would have performed if they were taking the MEAT, based off of those other standards that were in play ten years ago, that had a much lower level of rigor, the comprehension, just going back and regurgitating the information. What we can see is that with the MEAT test on the left, our students were doing very, very well. Our students, based off of that curriculum, more than half of them were getting that proficient level, which is passing the test. We had close to fourteen percent that were that advanced level, so the blue and greens are where you wanna be. But when you look at the M-Step, or the newer standards, the standards that were developed eight years ago, higher level of rigor, higher depth of knowledge, you can see the colors have changed, and we see more reds and more yellows. The NWA helps us assess whether or not we are hitting the mark, not just with the content, but with the depth. So just looking at this, you can see, but hopefully what I can see, is our work needs to be focusing on increasing the rigor, increasing the depth, and having our kids really wrestle with information. I've heard Dr. Outlaw say this with with multiple presentations this year, having that productive struggle, having our kids wrestle with information and make new meaning of things, and this is where it starts with literacy. So our team is working very hard, we've got seventeen people involved in this task force, for lack of a better term, really diving into this information, diving into this data, saying, what's next? Is it gonna be just examining the standards and making sure that our standards match? Is it gonna be completely revamping the curriculum? Is it gonna be getting new resources? Is it gonna be developing professional development to help target the instruction for our teachers and our students? And to be honest, right now, we don't necessarily know what's gonna be needed. Right now, we can see the gaps, we can see what our goals are, and our goals are to increase our students to at least twenty percent of our students being advanced on the M-Step and SAT, at least fifty percent of our kids being proficient, or in other words, doing what they've already showed they can do back with the MEAT, getting to that level now with the M-Step, and less than twenty percent of our kids being not proficient, and more than seventy percent of our kids college and career ready according to the SAT. Those are our, those are our goals, and this is how we hope to get there. We hope to be able to come back to you just in a couple of months and say, here's our strategic plan, here's what it looks like this year and for the next couple of years, here's the baby steps we're hoping to be able to take, to be able to make a dent in this, and to be able to really engage our students in meaningful, lasting learning that takes literacy to that next level. We hope that our our teachers are gonna be able to become the experts in this, and that we have these silos of excellence that we can already see, we already have some teachers that are doing this work now, we can see it in their scores, and that we can become multipliers, we can grow that from within. Like I said, we have seventeen people involved in this, we've got lots of stakeholders who are weighing in, which helps us that we don't have to then later on try to get by it, because they're a part of the work. So that's where we are right now, that's where we're going, and got hope and belief that we're gonna be able to get there. Questions? Yes, sir?
You back up a slide, show it please. Okay. You hope to present a strategic plan within two months.
Yes, sir.
What are you going to do?
Are you asking, hope, or are we gonna be able to?
I wanna know what you're going to do. I don't wanna, I don't wanna know what you hope to do. For example, what do you really think? You really think it's gonna be two months, you really think it's gonna be three months?
Yeah.
Obviously, you're gonna present a plan.
Absolutely.
What do you really think it's gonna be?
Well, the goal is January, but I also wanna put an arbitrary deadline on that, where we start to rush the process just to present something and put a finger in the dam.
So should we go the other way around? Should we say February, and your goal was to be January? Do you see what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
Can I jump in on this?
Yeah.
We started with this, and the charge of the committee was to come back to us with the financial implications for the nineteen-twenty school year, we need to talk about those first. It's gonna take a long time, here's the development, this is work that's gonna continue ongoing, but the board needs to know in December, January, what kind of investments we need to make. We need more reading staff, we need to know if we build a budget around it, if we need a new curriculum, if we need, whatever that needs to be, we need to know what those dollar figures are now, and we could do a lot of this other work later.
I guess I don't feel, the word hope makes me nervous, right? Cause I don't know what that means, right? So I guess maybe what I'm saying, changing it around a little bit, was I'd rather you, if you think it's January, rather you tell me February, and then, and January you're ready to go, you know what I mean? Cause at least now, in my head, I can kind of put my head around, okay, you're gonna go from here to there in that period of time.
Launch is nineteen-twenty. Launch is nineteen-twenty.
Nineteen-twenty.
September of nineteen, which is less than a year from now.
Nineteen slash twenty, not nineteen.
Nineteen slash twenty school year, we're all go. That's. That's the start of next school year.
And that's not negotiable. That is happening, yes.
And what you've got is you've got the standards from this year and obviously prior years. So you know what student population needs to be targeted just now, how much it's going to cost, basically, or what resources are going to be needed to get this accomplished starting next school year.
That sums it up, absolutely. You can go out and buy programs, and any program can get you a short-term solution to a short-term identified problem. But we're looking to build more capacity than that. We want to make sure that our teachers have the training to outlast any short-term program that we might go to. So it's going to be multifaceted with both training and possible resources.
And I know that the NWEA gets tested in our schools, but the big test we're looking at are SAT, which is March. Is that March or April?
Yeah, everything's April.
April, 12, 13.
Okay, and then M-Step, correct?
Correct.
When is that? That's April.
Same time.
Okay, so 10.
Yes.
The age groups are at different times. So it goes everywhere from like mid, you know, it's like late or mid-April through the end of May.
Right.
It's like a six-week stretch of time. Two weeks for this grade, two weeks for this grade.
Okay, that's, it is, I know you're new.
You're fine.
And it's fair to say that we're obviously have made some adjustments since last M-Steps and SAT to get into these groups to hopefully have a better score this year or this school year than last year.
There's significant work going on this year. Every year, there's great work going on, but we have some different work with Dr. Schmittow. And Bob Larson has been a great addition to this team. Bob is doing so much with the data. And a lot of times, we can be, we could spend a lot of time searching for data. Bob is literally, we're starting on second base in these conversations this year. Bob comes in, he's already come up with some great, you know, put it in a format that's really easy for teachers to look at. And we're starting there, and the conversations are starting at a whole different level. This is the second year of what we call our student data meetings. And those are going much better. We've got some good things going on. So yes, I think we definitely expect.
And to follow up on that, one of the great things about this is we're able to now either substantiate or refute our hunches. Because in education, we've all been in school before. We all think that what we experienced, what we did, is best and works best. And now, when we can see the data in real time, not just having to wait for the M-Step or SAT, we've got the NWA and our common assessments, we can make those midstream corrections right now.
Hey, don't misunderstand, I'm not trying to be critical of what you're doing.
Oh, not at all.
I appreciate what you're doing, and I've always been a big fan of Bob, so that's all.
Yeah, absolutely.
But it's like we talked before about, you know, I hate to see surprises in the spring.
Sure.
Well, it's kind of like my, the word hope, it's kind of like the opposite of that, right? It's like, I have a hard time understanding, you know, how to look forward and plan for that. So that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Scratch out, hope to, we will begin. Yeah, we will.
We will. We will have a request to the board, yes.
Well, there's two months or three months, that to me is kind of somewhat irrelevant. But, you know, what are we going to do, you know? And yeah, the reason you're here, the reason why Bob's doing what he's doing is because, you know, we can't keep having surprises every spring after spring. So all that data and everything you put up there is excellent. You know, to me, that really starts to hone in on, I'll call them, more focused action plans of how we can, you know, solve the longer problems. So that's all great, I think you did a great job.
Appreciate that.
Thanks, Tom.
Anything else? Next one, Bob, I'm just going to give this to you.
Okay, next, we're going to, our action items. Could I get a motion to approve the energy bond bid resolution, general obligation?
I move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the energy bond bid resolution as presented.
Support.
What this is, is the bonds we just sold were passed through. Cut off the trust. Hilltop Securities was the lowest interest rate. So our financial advisor, Senator Bart, and that is what we go with them. Of course, he did. So Matt and I run the phone call. They were eight bidders. And so this is just the final process. And now the bonds are now sold. It's closed on the bonds in the next week or so, and they have the funds on November 6th.
And the projects are out to bid.[1665.46]